Good evening, welcome to the May 19th, 2025. Provide our invocation, so please rise if you are able and remain standing for our Pledge of Allegiance after.
Lord God, Heavenly Father, I give you thanks tonight especially for the compassion and the wisdom that you've given to the leadership here in our Troy community, especially for Mayor Baker and all those gathered here to meet us tonight. And I also give you thanks, Heavenly Father, for the strength shown by the Athens Women's Powerlifting Team and the unconscionable records that they have set over the course of this season, including 424 pounds lifted in amazing feats to take the state championship. They all be blessed by tonight's meeting and the proceedings therein. And all this we pray through the Holy Spirit and Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where wisdom stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have to tell you, when it's a full house, a lot of people out there, it sounds much different. We're in the Pledge of Allegiance, right? Well, I'll call the May 19th, 2025 Troy City Council meeting to order and ask for the roll call from Ms. Stewart.
Mayor Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Brooks?
Here.
Councilmember Chamberlain Kryanga?
Here.
Councilmember Chanda?
Here.
Mayor Protem Gunn?
Here.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Here.
Councilmember Hoderek?
Here.
All present this evening. First up are certificates of recognition and special presentations. We have two this evening. C1 is a certificate of recognition and congratulations to Athens High School 2025 Women's Powerlifting Team, MHSAA Division One State Champions. And I'll present that to you down here at the podium. Now, he looks scary. I don't know how you did it. It was amazing. I'm very excited. I do have this certificate of recognition and congratulations I want to present to all of you. It's pretty awesome, so I'm going to read it into the record for everybody. Whereas the Athens High School 2025 Women's Powerlifting Team won the Michigan High School Powerlifting Association, MHSPLA, state championship on March 8th, 2025 at Lake Orion High School. And whereas the team has now won the MHSPLA Varsity Women's State Title three years in a row and runner-up in 2022, they compete nationally in the USA Powerlifting, USAPL, and the varsity team were national runners-up for both the 2023 and 2024 seasons and set a new national record with senior Michaela Twome--where's Michaela? Oh, hi. --lifting 424 pounds to beat the old record of 418 pounds. That's a couple of us council members, I think. I contemplated asking Cindy if we could try to have you do that, but I think it was a bad idea. Whereas Michaela competed in the Powerlifting Student World Championship earlier in May with eight countries represented, Michaela won the title of world champion on her final deadlift. World champion. And whereas the team boasts seven USAPL Individual National Champions, one three-time USAPL Individual National Champion, 12 USAPL All-American Powerlifters, one two-time USAPL All-American Powerlifter, five MHSPLA Individual State Champions, 47 MHSPLA All-State Powerlifters, 15 two-time MHSPLA All-State Powerlifters, and two three-time MHSPLA All-State Powerlifters. And whereas the Athens High Women's Powerlifting Team has set records including 194 USAPL State Records, eight USAPL American Records, and nine MSHPLA Records. And whereas, special commendation is due to team members Alessandra Alopijin, Aljipin, Julia Arnett, Lilian Flores, Mariana Gold, Sarah Gronstadt, Maya Hengen--Hanks Tabeck, Camilla Inadeski, Remus Kakarni, Lilian Kotila, Ciara Lenz, Indira Martinez, Cassidy Morse, Izzy Pietrowski, Addison Pokely, Erica Seidel, Lilitha Thaki, Michaela Twome, and Emma Walters. And whereas, the city of Troy applauds and congratulates varsity powerlifting coach Nick Lusk--are you Nick?
Correct.
All right, good. Just checking. The interim coach in 2021, he took over the program in 2022. Coach Lusk hopes he is teaching his team how to best prepare for life and is so proud of what they have accomplished because of their dedication and hard work. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City of Council and of the City of Troy commends the Athens High School 2025 Women's Varsity Powerlifting Team for their fine efforts and extends this token of affection and admiration with which you are regarded in this city. And be it further resolved that the City Council of the City of Troy joins the citizens of this community in appreciation and celebration of the Athens High School 2025 Women's Varsity Powerlifting Team as the MHSSA Division One State Champions. This proclamation is presented this 19th day of May 2025. It's signed by myself as the mayor. All members behind it have--as City Council has signed it as well. Michaela, I'm going to present it to you because you're the world champion. That's pretty cool, even though it's worth--everyone deserves it. I probably broke it. You don't have to if you don't want to.
Oh, I will.
Go.
Thank you so much for this honor. I just want to thank all of my teammates and Coach Lusk. You guys have been such an amazing support system, and I couldn't have done without you guys, so thank you so much.
424 pounds. Sorry. All right. C2 is a legislative update presented by State Senator Michael Weber. Senator Weber, please come forward.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Michael Weber serves as the State Senator for District Nine, which includes Troy, the greater Rochester area, Sterling Heights, Shelby Township, and Utica. And back with a spring legislative update and, of course, hope to come back with the-- in the fall when some of this stuff is completed. But currently, we are working on our budget process, and I wanted to update you on some of the revenue sharing stuff there. The Senate passed our budgets last week and now working with the House and the Governor on budgets. The Senate recommendation does call for a 10% increase in statutory revenue sharing, and the increases are distributed using the same formula that we're using this current fiscal year, the three-factor and inverse taxable value formula that I know Senator Cherry's been working on. The recommendation in terms of constitutional revenue sharing is a 2.3% increase in that. And we have not given up on the Revenue Sharing Trust Fund. If anything, that's been introduced in the House, and Senator Cherry, Senator Moss, and myself are talking about introducing a different version in the Senate. The House does have, and this started under last session, but is continued this year with the Public Safety and Violence Prevention Trust Fund, and that did pass the House. And so, I--you know, last session, I used to think they were kind of competing proposals. Now I think they can kind of happen concurrently, and so that's what we're trying to work through. And part of that will be through the budget process, part of that will ultimately be through legislative process this session. Road funding is another big part that is part of the budget process, and I think will be pretty interlocked with the budget process this year. The House did pass a $3.1 billion long-term road funding plan that just directs existing revenue towards roads. It ensures that all taxes collected at the pump go towards roads, so of course, that affects the sales tax and the plan does make schools and municipalities whole in terms of lost sales tax revenue, but obviously got to negotiate that with the Senate, with the Governor's Office, so that's all part of the discussion there. It will direct more funds towards repairing local roads, so that's important. Obviously, a lot of this stuff is MDOT-related highway projects, you know, and we see the need for helping with our local roads more and more as we hear from our cities, our townships throughout the state. To give you an idea, though, on the House proposal, kind of what we're trying to--what we're talking about in terms of the House plan, City of Troy would directly receive 150% increase in terms of road funding or $17 million, and Oakland County would receive a 109% increase or $141 million in new revenue. So, again, trying to find long-term sustainable road funding. The last time this happened, when I was in the House, we managed about $1.2 billion in annual road funding, but trying to get away from kind of those one-time fixes and trying to have a sustainable amount of road funding dollars. So, that will be ongoing through the budget process and probably into the fall, I would guess. To give you an update on a couple other items that either I've been working on or we've been, as the legislature, have been working on, I did reintroduce the statewide sound wall funding mechanism legislation, so it's Senate Bill 80. And I have some help in the House this year with Representative Ron Robinson, who I work with in Utica. He is the new representative there. His bill actually did pass the House Transportation Committee with bipartisan support, made some changes that MDOT approved of, but essentially, for those new to this, you know, we want to help residents reduce noise pollution, area highways. The bill would create a fund located within the Department Treasury, and the fund would be administered by MDOT. And the idea would be to create an opportunity for local governments to apply for the funds and fill in the funding gaps that the federal government does not cover in terms of these projects. So, again, we're hopeful that the House version 4084 will get a vote in the House and come over the Senate, and we can continue to work on that. Obviously, a big item in--until last week, the only two bills that were signed by the Governor to date dealt with the tip credit and the earned sick leave, and I know we talked about--a lot about this at the end of last year and now the beginning of this year. We had the February 21st deadline by the courts, and, you know, some of these new mandates that were set to take effect by then, they called on us as elected officials to come up with a bipartisan resolution, and that's what we were able to do. We did, you know, the compromise weighed concerns from both employees and employers while keeping jobs in Michigan and helping small businesses keep their doors open. So, again, not a perfect solution, but one that hopefully is a compromise that a lot of our businesses can work with. And then more from--this is kind of more affected probably at the county level, but a lot of concerns from prosecutors as it relates to the Michigan Supreme Court ban on life without parole for 19- to 20-year-olds. What that 5-2 ruling means is that the ruling applies retroactively to relevant criminal cases on collateral review requiring that all applicable defendants be resentenced. And there's 582 cases statewide that need to be adjudicated within the next 180 days, so that's where the funding kind of comes into a play with the prosecutors. Numerous local prosecutors have expressed concern about the prescribed 180-day window as many of the cases are decades old. It's an immense burden on their offices to find and organize the applicable paperwork from when the hearings were originally held. And then, of course, additionally, victim advocates are concerned about additional traumatization of victims' loved ones, and so we're working through that process as it relates to the budget, and there's been discussion about trying to divert some of the funding within those courts' budgets to the prosecutor's offices so that they can do that. I also, I guess we'll see, but 180 days seems to be a quick timeline, so maybe that will get extended at some point in time. So, with that, just in conclusion, because I know you guys have a busy agenda, for residents here and at home, for more information, to sign up for our monthly E Newt News, please visit SenatorMichaelWeber.com or call our office at 517-373-0994.
Thank you, Senator. Any questions? Mayor Protem Gunn?
Two questions. Thank you, Senator Weber, for the update. The $17 million for the local roads, is that above and beyond what we already?
Yes. That would be additional to what the Act 51 formula that, yeah, you're currently getting.
Yeah. And then for the sound wall, so are you saying that there'll be funds provided to MDOT that Troy could apply for?
So, this would--this sets up the funding mechanism, and then within our budget process, so probably not this budget because the bills haven't passed yet, but in future budgets, we could appropriate funding for that. And my hope would be it'd be a steady stream of, you know, I don't know, maybe 10 to 15 million to start and just see what the need is and that kind of thing. So, it's a new concept. There's only one other state that does it now, and--but it just kind of came out of the discussion that we had a few years ago on getting the funding for the Troy Sound Wall, which everybody at this table was very helpful with, you know, helping with my colleagues in terms of getting that. But, you know, it's not a great process if you, as legislators, have to kind of do that on a year-to-year basis, so trying to do something like this is the best mechanism we saw out there, so.
Right. Thank you.
Councilmember Chamberlain Kryanga?
Thank you, Mayor. Always happy to hear about the Revenue Sharing Trust Fund.
Yes.
So, that would be you and Senators Moss and Cherry that would potentially propose something.
Yeah, that's what we're talking about right now. You know, Senator Cherry, he chairs that, like, that local government kind of budget, and so he's been working on revenue sharing issues. And then Senator Moss and myself had the bills last session, so Representative Tisdale and O'Neill, they already did introduce them in the House, and they introduced similar versions, so. But, yeah, working with Senator Cherry, Senator Moss on it, and we're hoping to get that introduced here soon, so.
Quick question on the sound wall funding. So, just a clarification. My understanding was Reps. McDonald and Coon in the House were trying to move something forward in the previous term. Is this with the Utica rep, is this a new--is that building off of that, or is it--that didn't move forward and so they're trying it again?
Yeah, so when last session ended, those bills died, so we tried to reintroduce them, and in this case, Rep. Robinson also showed an interest in it. And when I introduced the bills, obviously, you know, I thought about it with Troy in mind, but, you know, realistically, a lot of the area that I cover either has the 75 or M59, so a lot of Rochester Hills, and then, of course, Utica, they're really close to M59. And so the Utica mayor, you know, I saw him at an event, and he was like, gosh, people are really, you know, talking about your legislation and all this kind of stuff. So, Ron, being on that city council prior, you know, he kind of picked up the ball on it. But it's--but I'm--but everybody can support it, so it's just--it's not really whose name is on it as much as just trying to get the issue done, so.
Councilmember Brooks?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Senator, for the legislative update. Sorry, I'm a little--I'm getting over a little cold. Can you speak to any proposed changes in Medicaid that are coming out of the State House and the State Senate?
Well, so, we're monitoring what they're talking about at the federal level, but it's, you know, since it's a federal program, we're kind of waiting to see what comes out of, like, the U.S. House and ultimately the Congress, so we are monitoring it, and then we'll have to adapt our budgets accordingly, but, yeah, so.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yep. So, the--just to understand further, I've kind of read a little bit on the road funding, but I don't fully get it. I know it's changing. So, the $3.1 billion potentially going into that, where is that coming from? I know some of it was, like, removing sales tax from the gas tax, but really, I'm looking like--
Yeah.
--where ultimately is it coming? Where did that money used to go and where is it going to go?
Yeah, and I think what I'll do is I can get you more dedicated, you know, it is the House's proposal, it's--and so I'm just kind of reporting on what's out there so far and what's passed. I will say the Senate appropriations did do a hearing on it, but I can try to--I'll follow up and get some more information, the entire council, on exactly how the House, you know, plans to do it. A lot of it is dealing with not doing as much in terms of what they call, quote-unquote, like corporate welfare in terms of, like, the SOAR Fund and some of that kind of stuff, and, you know, trying to repurpose some of that money, you know, for roads, which is obviously something that our residents, our business owners, you know, have an interest in concerning, so.
Yeah, I mean, we currently get about $11 million a year from Act 51, so $17 million would be a massive increase, which, how likely do you think anywhere near that amount is going to happen? And then, have there been discussions of state capacity? That's one thing, like, when all these road projects go on at the same time, we hear from our city engineering team that all the contractors get overloaded. How will that play out?
That's going to be, yeah, that will be potentially an issue. I would say a lot of people are talking about the $3 billion number. Then the question would be the formula. So, the way the House does the formula, and again, I'll get you those documents, but the way they're doing it is they're trying to push more of it into local road funding. Obviously, if it goes through the Act 51 formula completely, you're probably going to see less of that, you know, directly to Troy. So, it's really based on how the formula, you know, works, and then obviously the bottom-- the bottom number. But a lot of folks have kind of identified the $3 billion as kind of the target number, if you will, so.
Any other questions? Thank you, Senator.
I always appreciate it. Thank you.
Good to see you. Thank you. That concludes certificates of recognition and special presentations. We have no carryover items this evening. We move on to public hearings. We have six continued public hearings from a previous meeting. We'll start with E1, which is the melting pot liquor license violation. Again, this public hearing's already been open and remains open. I--before I turn it over, I see one person has signed up to speak on this. Actually, I'm going to go ahead and have Abigail Tyner come forward and speak.
Hello, Mayor Baker and City Council. Thank you so much for having me here today. And I want to start with saying I am here to talk generally on underage drinking, not just the melting pot instance, and I just want to share with you guys today why the work you are doing towards this is so critical to preventing underage drinking. Alcohol is still the number-one substance consumed by youth in Troy, and at the high school level, it still beats out marijuana and vaping in terms of youth use. Nearly one-third of middle school students and half of high school students are saying that alcohol is easy or very easy to access, according to the Michigan Profile for Healthy Youth. And we find that the average age of first use for those who are using is about 13 and a half. So, we're looking at somewhere between seventh and ninth grade is where we are starting-- start seeing youth using particularly alcohol. And 18% of those youth who are using alcohol are accessing it through our retailers here. So, I just wanted to thank you guys so much for the work that you are doing to help resolve this, and I deeply appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Nobody else has signed up to speak on E1, but that doesn't prohibit anyone from speaking on the matter. Anyone who'd like to speak on E1? Nikki and Lynn, did you have anything you wanted to add based on our last meeting? Or you'd like to speak on E1, melting pot? Okay, please, come forward, state your name.
Hi, I'm Rachel Orlando. I'm the Assistant General Manager at the Melting Pot. I was just reading through it just to make sure I was clear on everything, and we have implemented tip safety after our violation and made sure that our entire staff is daily reminded that we take only someone with an ID, even if it's on their phone, anything else, it's not allowed. So, everyone has been tip certified, and we have verification of that for the staff, too. That's all I really had.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Councilwoman Hoderek, did you--I'm going to--
Thank you, Mayor. We began the discussion of the liquor license violation hearings at our last meeting, so those present that weren't at the last meeting, this is a continuing conversation. It was the first violation hearing that had been brought to City Council since before COVID, and for a majority of us, it was a first experience with such a hearing. I think there were only three of us that had participated in hearings prior. During our deliberations at our last meeting, it hit me how different the entire discussion felt from those that we had had in the hearings that we had held pre-COVID. This is something that the city has traditionally taken very seriously, as has every single council member I've served with in my time, and I'm in--I'm about to finish 12 years of this. And I know my colleagues well enough at the table, and while I should not speak for them, I know them well enough to know that they, too, share the concern and see this as a priority. But somehow, at the last meeting, the hearing felt a little bit less than, almost rote or perfunctory. Pieces of the longstanding, all of the community focus were missing that I know I had witnessed over many years here. It wasn't some major thing, it was a number of little things. For example, the presence of the Troy Community Coalition was missing, which is something that always gave an olive-community, all-hands-on-deck feel to this very important matter of protecting our minors. It occurred to me, as our meeting was unfolding, that anyone who had observed the pre-COVID hearings might be watching, and because they might not be referencing the letters from the establishments we were seeing in our agenda packet, they could wonder if our policy, if our collective longtime emphasis on protecting minors had shifted. So, without belaboring or having a long discussion, I think it's important to create the bridge back to that pre-COVID tone and tenor, and that we signal that we all--what we all know to be true, but I believe should take--we should take a moment to emphasize just the same, that the policy of how important this is for our city, while it may have been delayed a bit due to staffing issues and challenges during COVID and post-COVID, that we all really remain committed to it. And I thank my council colleagues for indulging me last meeting, as some looked at me and said, gee, there's a history that she must have that they didn't have, and for just helping pause for a second. And for just helping pause for a second so we could reemphasize. So if I may, Mayor, it's as simple as a tone at the top, which we know we have learned the hard way. When we don't set it properly, things can go south on us. So this is in that spirit of setting the tone at the top. I'd like to seek consensus, just simple consensus from council for two things. One, that we, as the elected body, absolutely remain committed to the importance of protecting our minors from a policy setting standpoint, that that policy hasn't shifted. And two, that we expect and, and know that our police department and our directed patrol unit will continue to recognize that the leadership in the city values their important work, and that when violations are brought to council for hearings in the future, that those hearings include the components of those we had held from council. Again, it's higher order, it's tone at the top, and it felt missing from our last meeting. And I turn it back to you, Mayor, for how to proceed.
Mayor Protemgun?
I'd like to thank you, Councilman Hodorak, and I agree with everything, but I come also with a different perspective because in my personal business, I have to interact with businesses that have liquor licenses. So the first question I would say is from all these businesses, I know for a fact that they had to have some sort of alcohol training to get the insurance. It's, it's just part of the process. So somewhere along the line, either it wasn't done or it wasn't conveyed to the insurance company. But the second thing is, I know these licenses, they get renewed in April. And if we could see continual particular businesses that violate, you know, and serve minors, we, we can, as a city, we can send a letter to the Liquor Control Commission and say, we don't, not that they would take our advice, but we don't agree that their license should be renewed. I think, I take this very seriously, too, having raised a couple of young kids and, you know, aware that these kids try to find it any way they can, so let's not make it easy for them. That's what I'm saying.
I think I, so Councilwoman Hodorak saw consensus. I, I think there's probably consensus to continue a strict enforcement or a strict policy of protecting our minors and that. And the second component of it is supporting our police department and the directed patrol unit from, for the work that they're doing.
And that the hearings...
And that the hearings come back to what they had historically always been, because that's a value that I think our city, it is important to our city. So there's consensus on that one. So I think that's important for everyone to hear. As far as, I realize I probably were, I'm still in the middle of a public hearing, I probably should have had it brought to the table for discussion before we went to that section, but, you know, sometimes. So I'm going to close the public hearing on that one, and I'll move E1, the melting pot liquor license violation, as printed in the agenda packet. Support it. Move that, Councilmember Hamilton? Moved by the chair, supported by Councilmember Hamilton, that we approve E1, the melting pot liquor license violation, as printed in the agenda packet, now we can have discussion. We, we, there's consensus, though. I think the statement was very clear. Certainly, if anyone would like to add anything, I would never quiet anybody, but...
I mean, yeah, I can add to that. I mean, I, you know, we have agreement in the council as well as among the city staff that protecting our minors from alcohol abuse is one of the most utmost important thing for us at the council and as a city. And whatever needs to be done, we need to do that. And so it's, it's absolutely critical that we do that. It's, we take that very seriously. The father of somebody who just graduated from college, was in high school in Troy, you know, I can't imagine kids having access to alcohol. And it's our businesses, we value our businesses, but we expect them to follow laws. And I think as, you know, Mayor Protemgun mentioned, I mean, they all get trained and it's expected that they follow their training procedure and make sure, follow up that the employees follow the rules. So I completely agree with what has been said here.
Very good. Any other discussion on E1, which can pertain to the others that are coming up? The vote, Ms. Stewart?
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Councilmember Chamberlain Kryanga?
Yes.
Councilmember Chanda?
Yes.
Mayor Protemgun?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hodorak?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next up is the continuation of the public hearing for E2, Polish Market Liquor License Violation Hearing. I do not see that anybody has signed up to speak on E2, but again, that doesn't prohibit anyone in the audience from doing so. Please come, please come forward. And please state your name.
Good evening. My name is Darius. I represent Polish Market. And I came today to kind of explain, you know, how serious we are about, you know, protecting minors and really trying to do whatever we can in our, you know, in our heart. And, you know, I'm really trying really, really hard to have our employees trained and be, you know, knowing, know that they cannot allow it to do such a thing as certain minors. So quickly, I'm not sure if I allow to, but if you guys already know, I have implemented this bi-weekly, you know, employee, employee training document that they have to sign. That's really important for them and for us, because once they have to sign some kind of a document, they kind of take it more serious. So, and during that bi-weekly training program, what I do, I kind of retrain them, guys, you know, what you have to do, you know, check the ID horizontal, 21, you know, vertical is under probably, check the year, all that stuff, check the picture. And we take it seriously, and we tell them all the time, bi-weekly. They kind of sometimes tired of it because they already know what's, what I'm going to talk about. But that, that really does help us out and looks like it's bringing some, you know, fruits of that, okay? So we've done that, and I'm continuing to doing this also. I was, you know, we sell a lot of product to different nationalities. So we have, I posted, you know, I have postings all over that we cannot sell under 21. No one can purchase alcohol legally under 21, but also included this in different language, which is Polish language, because we have a lot of Polish people coming into our store. So we've done that, and I have it in the different location, guys, as well. And honest to God, guys, I'm really trying, we're truly trying, you know, we, we make it really, we scare them, so to say. I know we can't do too much scare them, but we tell them, guys, this is very serious, you know, because they think, oh, it's just a job, they're gonna, you know, mess up our business, they're gonna go somewhere else. Well, I'm trying to help them out, and we're trying to treat that business as a family. So they kind of feel like a family. Hopefully this helped, guys, and I really apologize for what happened, really do, okay?
Thank you. Appreciate you coming forward.
Thank you.
Does anyone else like to speak on E2 regarding the Polish market? All right, with that, I'll close the public hearing for E2 and ask if someone would like to move the resolution. Councilmember Chamberlain Kryanga?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move E2, Polish Market Liquor License Violation, as printed in the agenda packet.
Support. Moved by Councilmember Chamberlain Kryanga, supported by Councilmember Chanda, that we approve E2, Polish Market Liquor Violation Hearing, as printed in the agenda packet. Any discussion? Councilmember Chamberlain Kryanga?
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to go back to what Councilmember Hodorak just shared. It's true for all of what, what was shared. And as a mother of a son who is, who just turned 10, and my husband and I, we are making choices to think twice about how alcohol, how he is, we don't want him to be in the presence of alcohol. He's becoming of that age where he's, he's aware of these things. So protecting our minors, it is so, so important. I think the second thing that I don't want to lose sight of that Councilmember Hodorak shared was about the Troy Police Department and the amount of time that is put into actually really enforcing. And it's, again, it's for the sake of our minors. And so I want to appreciate that work. I'm grateful, Councilmember Hodorak, for a long conversation, to learn about the history around this. And, and that was something that I hadn't stopped to think about, that how much time that takes, but how essential that is. Without enforcement, it's, it's, it's nothing. And then going back to the Polish market, I shared that my family, my husband being, being born in Romania, we often go there for delicacies. We call it kozanak kumak, poppy seed rolls. So we were there on Sunday, and I can say, I saw the signs up. I saw signs up in Polish in multiple places. And we just happened to be in the checkout, and we did see the cashier in front of us carded someone, someone who was certainly an adult, very clearly an adult, but was purchasing alcohol, and they were, they were still carded. So I do want to commend that activity, and I hope that that continues, and that always happens. I know it's an extra step, but for the sake of our minors, it is so important. And just, I, I wish the best to the company to keep up that behavior.
Thank you. All right, the vote, Ms. Stewart?
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Councilmember Chamberlain Kryanga?
Yes.
Councilmember Chanda?
Yes.
Mayor Protemgun?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hodorak?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you, sir, for, I don't know where you went, but thank you for coming. Get back there. Thank you for coming. Hope to not see you back here. That's...
Still want to be here.
Next up is E3, the continued public hearing for Sunoco Maple Gas Mart LLC Liquor License Violation, as printed in the agenda packet. Again, I don't see anybody has signed up for E3, but that doesn't prohibit you from speaking if you'd like to. Please come forward. State your name when you do.
Good evening, everyone. Mike Barrow, I am the owner of Maple Gas Mart. She is the employee that she did that incident. Technically, I understand, according to her statement, it was an honest mistake. We know for a fact that this is unacceptable. She, we had on each door of the liquor, the beer and wine on the cooler, we carded under 40 years of age. Unfortunately, the, the, the person that she bought that beer from her, she looks like exactly like one of our customer. And that customer, her name is Alex, and technically she looks like Alex. And she talks to her that, oh, Alex, you changed your hair color? What the, when did you do that? And then that, that person communicate with her like she, she did, like she's Alex for real. And she fooled her. And even though she did that, she got a write-up. And, and that write-up, it's, there is no any other chance for her to carry on working for me. I have the statement, and I have another piece of paper that on her shift, people, police officer came in and tried to do that again with her, like six months later, she passed. And they, we got a letter from the police department that she did a good job. Unfortunately, I believe her, and there is no any other chance on that behalf.
Okay, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak on E3? All right, with that, I'll close the public hearing and ask if someone would like to move the resolution. Mayor Protemgun?
I'll move E3, Sunoco Maple, Maple Gas Mart LLC Liquor License Violation, as printed in the agenda packet.
Support.
Moved by Mayor Protemgun, supported by Councilmember Chanda, that we approve E3, Sunoco Maple Gas Mart LLC Liquor License Violation, as printed in the agenda packet. Any discussion? Councilmember Hodorak?
Thank you for being here, and thank you to the previous gentleman for also being here. This is what I'm talking about, where we're holding one another accountable. We're establishing that we're locking arms to get this right. I had mentioned at the last meeting that in previous times, I've seen where someone who failed to card was, the managers of the establishments fired them on the spot because that was clear upfront in training that that would be an outcome if they didn't properly. So I did read the explanation in our packet. I appreciate you coming to discuss it. I appreciate you being here, owning this moment, thinking that you were speaking to someone when it was someone else, and I understand that. Part of the reason I want to be so forceful as a collective is, yes, we're protecting minors, but I also want to protect servers and cashiers, because heaven forbid someone makes that error in minor purchases and then has an accident. I wouldn't want to be the person that lives with that outcome. So that's the spirit at which I'm, I'm being heard. In training, going forward at establishments, that type of a discussion, along with just the, the training of how to card and what to look for, sharing that that is the tone and tenor of the dialogue in this family-friendly community. People move here to raise their kids. They move here for its safe city status. That safe city status does not happen accidentally, and it isn't just on our police department. This is proactive discussing, thinking about what keeps us healthy and strong, safe, the place you want to come to raise a family. So I appreciate you coming in, owning, discussing it. This is the discussion, the type of dialogue that was missing at our last meeting that I remember always occurred in our previous hearings. And I appreciate that you came forward and were willing to come face us and talk to us. Thank you.
Thank you. The vote, Ms. Stewart?
Councilmember Chamberlain Kryanga?
Yes.
Councilmember Chanda?
Yes.
Mayor Protemgun?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hodorak?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next up is E4, the continuation public hearing for BP Gas, John R. Petromart Liquor License Violation. Again, I don't see anybody has signed up to speak, but sir, it looks like you're here to speak. Please come forward. State your name when, when you start.
My name is Joseph Shalal. I'm here on behalf of actually Troy Gas LLC. John R. Petromart sold its licenses and its business on January 8th, 2025, to Troy Gas We explained that to the city attorney, but they said that the council still wants to see someone from the new owner, Troy Gas LLC, and I'm here to represent them. I want the council to be made aware that they do take this seriously, that they have a 100% ID check. Everyone that comes in has to present their ID and scan it into the computer to make a determination of whether or not they're 21. It's a, it's a good policy for checking ID for every single person that walks through the door that tries to buy alcoholic beverages. Unless they have a fake ID, that's beyond our control. That's the best we could do. The only question you have now before you is, you have a resolution for John R. Petromart, which is no longer in business and doesn't have a license. So I, I don't know, maybe the city attorney can tell us what to do here to resolve that issue. I mean, if they're out of business, I don't know what you do.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it. Anyone else like to speak on E4? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. City Attorney Blum, did you want to address that? I, I know it came up before in the presentation.
Yes, it, it has come up before, and yes, we were aware that this has, this license has been transferred. And obviously, in order to get a new license, they would have to undergo the training in order to have that transferred license. So it's, it's at council's discretion. Certainly, it's probably valuable to have that documentation in our police department files as well for the new establishment, and I'm sure that they could provide that easily, which is part of the proposed resolution. So instead of the, so the resolution could be amended just to have the new licensee provide the proof of the training that has been done.
Okay.
If council still chooses.
Unfortunately, no. Our system doesn't, isn't set up that way.
And, and Mayor, Council...
I'm just trying to beg...
Yeah, and, and council does not have to pass a resolution at all if, if that's your choice as well.
I'll leave it up to council. I'm, I, I have, I have faith that the new organization is doing the training, and I appreciate the representations made today. So I, I'm not concerned that that's the issue, and it does seem overly, maybe not overly burdensome, but unnecessary for them to provide the, their training when they're not the ones that were notice or sighted. that were noticed or cited in the first place. So I'm not, unless we make everybody provide proof of that when they have a new liquor license in the city, I'm not overly eager to amend the resolution to force this organization to do something. Mayor Protem Gunn?
Well, this resolution won't affect your business anyway, right? It affects?
As is, no, it does not.
Just BP Gas, which isn't in business, so.
Right. That said, I personally would like to close out this. I understand they're not in business, but I'm going to move E4 BP Gas John R. Petromart Liquor License Violation as printed in the Agenda Packet. Support. Moved by the Chair, supported by Councilmember Hamilton, that we approve E4 BP Gas John R. Petromart Liquor License Violation as printed in the Agenda Packet. Any discussion? I'll just reiterate my appreciation for you coming this evening and sharing what you shared, and I think my personal opinion is that everybody should have mandatory carding for every purchase of liquor in your situation. So I'm glad that your business that you're representing is doing that. Thank you. The vote Ms. Stewart?
Councilmember Chanda?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Gunn?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Councilmember Chamberlain Kryanga?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next up is E5, the Continued Public Hearing for 7-Eleven Inc. and MCME Investment 5020 John R. Road Liquor License Violation. Again, I don't see that anybody has signed up to speak for E5. But I see a hand go up. Please come forward and state your name.
Good evening. My name is Chris Indoret, representing 7-Eleven. So we are a corporation, but we also franchise locations out. The franchisee is also here tonight. He did take all the necessary steps. He terminated the employee involved in the situation. And then we also did some training for his employees as well to make sure that they are following proper protocols. We hold a high standard of brand standards, is what we like to call it, which we maintain very high accountability for our franchise owners to ensure that they're keeping the community safe and making sure that we're doing our part to protect our reputation as well. But that's all I have tonight for this matter.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming. Anyone else like to speak on E5? All right, we'll close the public hearing. Someone like to move the resolution? Councilmember Hamilton?
I'd like to move E5 7-Eleven Inc. and MCME Investment 5020 John R. Road Liquor License Violation as printed in the Agenda Packet.
Support. By Councilmember Hamilton, supported by Mayor Protem Gunn, that we approve E5 7-Eleven Inc. and MCME Investment 5020 John R. Road Liquor License Violation as printed in the Agenda Packet. Discussion? I appreciate you coming this evening. I appreciate you coming again this evening. And I think brand management and reputation is very important, so I hope from a 7-Eleven standpoint, you continue to take this seriously. The vote Ms. Stewart?
Mayor Protem Gunn?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Councilmember Chamberlain Kryanga?
Yes.
Councilmember Chanda?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next up is E6, 7-Eleven Inc. and Jandu LLC 2910 John R. Road Liquor License Violation. Again, no one has signed up to speak, but I see a hand go up. Please come forward.
How you doing, Mayor? My name is Darryl Kaem, area leader corporate side of 7-Eleven. About a year ago, when the violation took place, we've taken back the store to the corporate side from the franchisee. And recently, during the past year, we've trained all employees with certification in underage sales, tobacco sales, everything. So what they do now is they card everyone that comes into the store. And recently, we've given that store back to a new franchisee, so we no longer own it.
Very good.
All right.
Thank you for the information.
Thank you, sir.
Much appreciated.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak on E6? All right, we'll close the public hearing. Someone like to move the resolution? Councilmember Chanda?
I move item E6 7-Eleven Inc. and Jandu LLC 2910 John R. Road Liquor License Violation as printed on the Agenda Package.
Support. Moved by Councilmember Chanda, supported by Mayor Protem Gunn, that we approve E6 7-Eleven Inc. and Jandu LLC 2910 John R. Road Liquor License Violation as printed in the Agenda Packet. Discussion? I'll just take this moment. So as one of the three councilmembers up here who've sat through previous liquor violation hearings prior to COVID, this does feel more familiar to see the faces come forward to speak a little bit. Packets of paper and letters say one thing, but seeing faces and having somebody come down here make a big difference. So I appreciate everyone coming forward this evening. It is really important, and everything that's been said this evening by my fellow members of council has resonated with me in so many levels, except for the fact that I now have an 18-year-old, and a 16-year-old, and a 13-year-old, and it, you're in a similar boat, Councilmember Brooks, getting closer. And it's a constant, it's a reality of life that alcohol can be easily accessible. My daughter had her prom this weekend, and I saw many students the next day at a baccalaureate service, and I promise you, too many of them were hungover, and it was awful. Because I know what's going on, and I know that the Troy Community Coalition, for example, does a lot of good work in our community to try to prevent those types of parties, but it needs to be a continued focus of our city if we want to maintain our safe city status, if we want to maintain our family-friendly status, if we want to maintain our reputation that you don't come to Troy and screw around. And things are going to happen. I recognize that. We all recognize that. Mistakes are going to happen. People are going to break the law if that happens. But from the city's standpoint, I'm proud of the work that we do from every department and our Police Department, from the council table, and all throughout to ensure that we're doing everything from a policy standpoint to ensure the safety and security of our residents, especially our youth and minors who, as a former youth and minor, made bad decisions sometimes. So I get it. So it's very important that we do what we can to protect everybody in our community. So I appreciate this evening, the continuation of these public hearings and having the opportunity to have them feel a little bit more normal and to show the seriousness of them without the seriousness we had two meetings ago that seemed a little bit out of balance. So we appreciate it. So, thank you. The vote Ms. Stewart?
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Councilmember Chamberlain Kryanga?
Yes.
Councilmember Chanda?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Gunn?
Yes.
Motion carries. That concludes public hearings this evening. Next up, our public comment for items on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. I do see two people have signed up, but I think one of them has left. But first up will be Mary Ellen Barden, she'd like to speak on K1A. Ms. Barden, you know the rules. You have three minutes.
Yeah.
It's not a back and forth, but we're happy to listen to you. We have an opportunity to reply if we'd like.
Hello, I'm Mary Ellen Barden. I have several, I've requested several and several emails that you contact me, have not heard from you, but, so today I'm here. I want to, my major concern really is the residents behind the new Kmart proposed settlement offer. I was here with Mr. Franco last week. He was very adamant he was doing nothing for us and that he had no really concern for my concerns. Sorry, Mr. Franco claims his developments are known for beautiful landscaping, yet the part of the property that backs up to our homes is constantly neglected. Meanwhile, the visible corridors along Big Beaver and Coolidge, they mow those, they take care of them. Anything that's visible to Somerset is taken care of, even though it's under construction, they're regularly maintained. The double standard leaves me to no reason to believe that anything will change once they construct the buildings and they can no longer see our berm. When I voiced, again, when I voiced my concern, Mr. Franco, he responded that we should be grateful that he tore down a dilapidated building. He sarcastically referred that we used to have 6,000 employees behind us, it's got to be better. Well, I could tell you that it's not better. The reality is that Kmart operations were Monday through Friday business hours. We had a security patrol, we had a maintained berm, and they respectfully retreated the residents and made a nice, very nice living experience for us. Not so so far with Mr. Frankels. Because I cannot make Mr. Franco and Mr. Forbes listen to me, it is my hope that this council will insist on some barriers during the Phase 1 process. This will allow us to have less problems when Phase 2 goes into effect next to our property. We'll have trees, and we'll have more noise and more dust abatement. I think because of the increased foot traffic closer to our homes, we also need a fence. I would like to keep our neighborhood peaceful and well-maintained, and I would like your help in doing so because you are my voice, because I don't have a checkbook. I vote you guys in, and I hope that you will help us maintain our quiet, peaceful neighborhood, and I think that does require a lot more barriers than we currently have or that Mr. Franco will commit to.
Thank you.
I also now know why Mr. Forbes talks and not Mr. Frankel.
All right, next up is Renes Usaj, but I think he left because he didn't get to speak after C2 when he wanted to. That concludes those who've signed up for public comment for items on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. Now's an opportunity for council and administration to reply. As I spoke to you just before the meeting, Ms. Barden, I make it a habit not to discuss pending proposals while they're still before the Planning Commission with residents. I probably should have shot you an email back and said so, so you didn't feel like you weren't getting heard. But now is our opportunity, this will be, as announced shortly before us, at the June 9th meeting. I personally will ask, I'm sure now all of us who are very aware of the concerns you have, especially those who have watched the Planning Commission meetings, with Mr. Forbes and Mr. Frankel, and, you know, I can't promise anything from this table tonight, but certainly the conversation will be had and we'll continue to speak out. Well, yes, and there's a lot of moving parts to that, and again, I can't do it back and forth, but, and there are phases in different site plan approval, there's different phases of this whole development. So it will get addressed, the questions will be asked. I will commit to that for sure. Okay? Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Chamberlain Kryanga?
Thank you, Mary. Ms. Barden, I do hope we could talk later. So my understanding is you're on the northern, kind of northeastern area. So I know we can't have a back and forth now, but perhaps later. So my son goes to Schroder, you know, we're at Beechwood. I've been, I have a lot of friends on that street, so I've been trying to keep them posted what's happening. And so, of course, you know, I care very much. This is my neighborhood in many ways. So, you know, do hope we can speak later, and I will bear in mind and do what we can to be helpful.
Thank you. All right, that concludes City Council and City Administration's response to reply to the public comment. We have no postponed items, so we move on to regular business. I want is board and committee appointments. There are no mayoral appointments this evening, so I'll turn it over to Mayor Protem Gunn for City Council appointments.
Thank you, Mayor Baker. Resolve that the Troy City Council appoints the following nominated persons to serve on the boards of committees to zoning board of appeal for the term expires on 12/31/2025, Tyler Fox.
Support.
Moved by Mayor Protem Gunn, supported by Councilmember Chamberlain Kryanga, that we confirm the appointment of Tyler Fox as the Planning Commission Rep on ZBA for the term expiring December 31st, 2025. Any discussion? The vote Ms. Stewart?
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Councilmember Chamberlain Kryanga?
Yes.
Councilmember Chanda?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Gunn?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Motion carries. That concludes City Council appointments this evening. Next up is I2 Board and Committee nominations. I have no mayoral nominations this evening. It's my understanding that Mayor Protem Gunn doesn't have any City Council nominations either. I3 is a request for closed session. I'll move be it resolved that Troy City Council shall meet in closed session as permitted by MCL 15.268E Troy v. 4770 Rochester and 2955 East Long Lake LLC versus Troy.
Support.
Moved by the Chair, supported by Councilmember Chamberlain Kryanga, that we approve I3, the request for closed session as printed in the Agenda Packet. Any discussion? The vote Ms. Dixon? Ms. Stewart?
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Councilmember Chamberlain Kryanga?
Yes.
Councilmember Chanda?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Gunn?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Stewart. Next up is I4 Standard Purchasing Resolution 4 Sourcewell Cooperative Contract Thermoplastic Coating for Pool Floors and Walls at the Troy Community Center, and I see Recreation Director Brian Gol is coming forward.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The item before you is for approval to award a contract to Raindrop Products LLC to apply thermoplastic coating on the pool walls and floors at the Troy Community Center per the Sourcewell Cooperative Contract for an estimated total cost of $232,333.75 not to exceed budgetary limitations. This project will not take place until the 2026 fiscal year. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Any questions? Councilmember Chamberlain Kryanga?
Thank you, Mayor. So I started doing some research around thermoplastics. I hadn't heard of it before. Of course, you know the Marsite. And my understanding, and it states in the memo, it actually lasts, it's more durable than Marsite, though Marsite is less expensive. Just wondering, because there are other options out there, kind of, again, how we landed on this as opposed to, you know, there are additional options like the concrete, pebble aggregate, A, and then B, which other cities or, you know, with the county, are there examples of other pools that are using this, just so I have some point of reference?
So as far as the pebble and concrete and things you brought up, those are a type of Marsite, just a stronger type. They still only last about five to seven years. This particular process, it will help with pool chemicals, keeping things more adjusted to where we won't have to use as many chemicals. It also has a 10-year warranty on it, which from our site, you get about a year. So as far as the places we did, there aren't any in this particular area, but they do a lot of them down south. We've talked to about five different places, and they're all very happy with it. So this is the way we've decided to go. Dennis Trantham and myself have done research on it as well. So this is what we feel is the best for the city to extend the amount of time that it will last and not have to do this every five years. Because every time we do the Marsite, you know, the pool has to close for a month. So the less that we have to do the Marsite, the more the pool can be open.
Just a final question confirmation, it's safe, right? I mean, it sounds like it is like a very widely-used material.
Yep, yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yeah, my question, you kind of mentioned it, we close for a month, but I'm curious what that process will look like, when will it get done, how long does it have to close? Is the whole thing closed? How does that work?
So, yeah, for the, because there's so many layers of Marsite on the pool right now, because when they do lay Marsite, they continue to lay it on top for five or six layers, and they have to take it all off. And that's another reason we decided to do this at this time, because we're at the point where we have to have all the previous Marsite taken down to the base. So that would be an expensive amount either way. It would be more than just Marsiting because they have to rip it all out. So this also includes ripping out all that Marsite and putting this new coating down. So with ripping stuff out, it'll take about, they say, three weeks. We're going to say four, just to be safe, to give us time to get things back up and going. But again, we won't have to do this again in five years, so.
And when, what month do you think of?
We're going to do it, we're planning to do it in August so that we can let the community center members use the outdoor pool during that time.
Great idea. Thank you. Thank you.
Good questions. Thank you. Mayor Protem Gunn?
In terms of the quote, how many companies did you ask for a bid on?
Well, we have three that we use here. They basically only do Marsite. And then a couple of them, we have spoken to some that do the pebble, and then the thermoplastic, we've talked to two different companies. This is the main company that does it in our area. They're pretty much the sole source for it here and here in Ohio, so. And that's how it is with Marsite. There's only, even in this state, there's, every time we bid out the Marsite, one company bids it out, and that's all we ever get. So.
Any other questions? Someone like to make a pool? Yeah, I was going to say, Councilmember Chamberlain Kryanga?
Sure. I move I4 Standard Purchasing Resolution 4 Sourcewell Cooperative Contract Thermoplastic Coating for Pool Floors and Walls at the Troy Community Center as printed in the Agenda Coating for Pool Floors and Walls at Detroit Community Center as printed in the agenda packet.
Support.
Moved by Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga, supported by Councilmember Chanda, that we approve I four, standard purchasing resolution for Sourcewell Cooperative Contract Thermoplastic Coating for Pool Floors and Walls at Detroit Community Center as printed in the agenda packet. Any discussion? Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just state quickly, I spent probably about an hour and a half doing laps over the weekend, multiple days, and spent a portion of that, as you're doing front stroke, you're looking down, and so I can confirm, we do need to resurface the pool. So it is certainly in need and time to do it. I am less familiar with thermoplastic, did do a bit of research, and I want to trust, trust our city staff that you guys know what's best, and if it's something that will last longer and we're going to get kind of a more durable, better value for money in a sense, and it's safe and it's good, then I'm happy to support this.
Councilmember Hamilton, I saw your hangup too?
Yep. Anyone who uses a community center, and occasionally bring my wife and daughters to the pool, sees how much everything there is used constantly. So I'm glad to see this, and you can see how mu, how much these things cost too. So I'm glad to see it, and we'll keep it going, and thank you for this.
Very good. The vote, Ms. Stewart.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga?
Yes.
Councilmember Chanda?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Gunn?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hodrick?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next up is I five, bid waiver, agenda and meeting management software, city clerk's office, recreation registration management software, recreation department, also introduced by Recreation Director Brian Gull.
The item before you is a bid waiver to enter into contract with Civic Plus of Manhattan, Kansas, for agenda meeting management, select pro for the city clerk, and recreation management software systems for the recreation department. Also requested is authorization to renew the Civic Plus subscription on an ongoing basis as needed by the city clerks and recreation departments. Funds are available in the 2026 fiscal budget for this project. I'm happy to answer. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions? Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga.
Just to confirm, is this with both the clerk's software and recreation software at the same time?
Correct.
Okay. So just to confirm, we are getting a deal because we're buying, we're using it, two different departments, wider package?
Right. If we had done it separately, it would have been more. So luckily, we were doing it, looking at this at the same time, it just happened to work out pretty well. And this will replace RecTrack that I'm sure plenty of you have heard complaints about. So this will have its own app and be much more informative for.
I have personally had so many challenges with the previous app, so I'm happy to hear this. I think my other questions relate to, like, when is it going to roll out? How, how will the public be informed? What kind of, kind of change management to get people used to using this? Is it user-friendly, that it won't take a lot of?
Yeah, so it's very user-friendly. The reason we came so quickly is because we are hoping to have this implemented for the winter deadline, winter registration deadline, which is in November, and they need that time to get it up and going and to train us and get us ready. We will do tons of social media, we will have signs up around the community center. Basically, we're going to get, you're going to have to re-sign up your household, because we want to get rid of all the millions of households that we have that are no longer around. So we'll, we'll get that out to everybody way ahead of time, make sure everybody knows the changes, and doing it in the winter is the best way to go because it's our slowest time compared to, you know, spring when we have camps in it and things like that. So that'll give people the, a little time to get adjusted and get used to it.
Another quick question. Is there any way that we as council members could ever demo it, just to get used to it and to help kind of be ambassadors for, before launches?
As soon as I get on it, I will see, we can talk to city management and see what we can do, for sure.
Did you have a question, Councilmember Chanda?
Yeah, a quick question, like, for the clerk's side of it, let's say, city council agenda, could it be used for the other, like, commissions and committees' agenda too? I'm assuming it's a similar.
Well, their section is just for agendas.
Correct.
Ours will do.
Yours is for that, so city clerks.
The agenda and management software is going to be used initially for city council, but we could roll it out in the future to other departments. We would probably need for maybe the larger boards and committees, zoning board of appeals and planning commission possibly.
Yeah, they meet almost as regularly as we do, just planning, so, yeah, that's good too. Thanks.
Also, I can say, if you want to check out the way it runs, Canton uses it, and so does Ann Arbor, so you could go on their websites and try, try it out there too. Our hope is to have everything that we do online, room reservations, whatever we can, rather than having people come in and have to do it all, you know, at the front desk or whatever, so.
That's great. I'll move I five, bid waiver, agenda and meeting management software, city clerk's office, recreation registration management software, recreation department as printed in the agenda packet.
Support.
Moved by the chair, supported by Mayor Protem Gunn, that we approve I five, bid waiver, agenda and meeting soft, management software, city clerk's office, recreation registration management software, recreation department as printed in the agenda packet. Any further discussion? The vote, Ms. Stewart.
Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga?
Yes.
Councilmember Chanda?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Gunn?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hodrick?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next up is I six, request to exchange city parcels for a privately owned parcel for additional trail route. And Kurt Bovin Seif, our public works director, is presenting.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you. You know, as I was putting this presentation together, I realized that some members of council might not realize how we got where we are today, and certainly some members of the public, because it's been, it's been a 10-year journey so far. So you'll notice some inconsistencies in format from, in the slide presentation. I typically don't like to do that, but I intentionally used a lot of the slides from the many, many presentations that we've given over the last 10 years. So just to start, why, why are we doing Trails and Pathways? Now, I didn't go back, if you remember in the council boardroom, if you've been along wrong enough, we used to have this big, long piece of paper, the timeline, that goes all the way back to the 70s of when we developed the actual bike routes in the city. So I just grabbed a couple of the more recent surveys that we did. So here's the 2007, 2012 Parks and Recreation, Parks and Recreation Master Plan Survey that indicated there's a desire for Trails and Pathways. And then you go to the 14 through the 19, and you see that number increase. And I'm sure you're starting to see the pattern here, and our current Parks and Recreation Plan, we're, we're working on, we just engaged with a consultant today, and I'm sure we'll see another increase in those respondents and the desire of Trails and Pathways. So back in 2015, we started, we started with the proposed plan. We are not as fortunate as some of our neighbors to have that abandoned rail right away, where we can just take it over and do a trail and pathway. So this was our first, very first attempt. We started up in, up in the northwest corner of the city. We actually were awarded a TAP grant for this, and we were ready to go. We started our public engagement, and at that time, the state of Michigan said, whoa, you're getting a lot of resident pushback, let's, let's relook at that, let's revisit this. So we withdrew from this plan and we went to an alternative plan. So the alternative plan was really to use existing sidewalks, convert them to a trail and pathway. We resubmitted for a TAP grant, and the TAP grant people said, you know, replacing a perfectly good sidewalk with a pathway isn't really the intent of this program. But lessons learned through all this, what we heard was this community was really interested in a recreational opportunity, not a non-motorized transportation opportunity. And that's what this plan really was. It didn't really highlight the beauty of Troy. So we went back to the drawing board, and we worked with several partners. At the time, Zion Christian Church, Walsh College, Water Resource Commission Office, and got the appropriate easements to develop what we called Phase One. That partnership continued with Stonecrest at the time, when we developed the dog park, and we had the trail go through there. So this was our first attempt and very popular. And we knew we weren't going to stop there. Oh, I'm sorry. And just a reminder, the grand opening of that Phase One was in August of 2018. And looking at some of the pictures that I didn't, because I thought we were going to be short on time, some of us were just babies back, that is. So after the trail opened, we saw huge success, and we immediately started working on Segment Two, and we wanted to continue that trail to the north. Segment Two did have some challenges. We were able to get all the way up to Eckford, but we didn't know how to get to Long Lake. And we had a lot of different ideas. We continued to work on it, we just couldn't really get a really good solution all the way up into Long Lake. But that didn't stop us from still working on trails. During that time, where we were working on the, the extension of the Segment One, we were able to do Phase Two, which included the Sylvan Lake, Glen Lake Park Trail that connected the park to the neighborhood to the west. And then we also did JC, we connected that neighborhood to the north. And just as a reminder, we continuing to work with the consultant on the design for the Hawk Signal at JC Park to safely cross pedestrians from the south to the north. So we were able to get some headway in the extension of the first segment of the trail. The paper streets, they haven't gone away, so they're still there, they're still available. Public Works, that area has been improved over the last seven years. City Council approved a plan unit development with Robertson Brothers that included a trail easement through their property. They actually improved the detention pond behind the DPW, created a water feature, gave us the easements to get all the way up to Long Lake. The developer on the north side of Eckford also agreed in his site plan to provide a trail access into the DPW. So that really just left the school district property, and this was where the curveball came to us. So school, Troy School District, unbeknownst to us, decided to do some land swapping with Mr. Gary Abatera for some property off of Liver Noise Road to have an entrance for the New Smith Middle School. We were, we intended to still use this, so we were almost back to the drawing board when Mr. Gary Abatera approached the city, who was at one time on our Trails and Pathways Committee, is a big trail advocate, and said, hey, I don't want to disrupt this plan, what can we do? How can we work something out? So what's being proposed is Mr. Abatera is willing to swap the city of Troy for approximately 10 acres and preserve that area as green space, so, which still allows us to have the trail and pathway, make that connection from the still school district property through what is now his property, and that could potentially be transferred to the city of Troy. So that's what the, the trail would look like if this was, proposal was approved tonight by city council, is we would finally have a full connection using the paper streets on the south end, going through Troy School District property, going through the property that Mr. Abatera is proposing to swap with the city of Troy, all the way up to Long Lake, and making that connection easily over to Rochester Road. When Rochester Road is expanded, we're going to have eight-foot pathway on the, on the west side of Rochester Road that could go up to Sylvan Glen. You can take the major road sidewalk, which is eight feet, all the way over to JC Park. By the time this is developed, we'll have that Hawk Signal, you can gain access to the JC segment as well. So what Mr. Abatera is asking is no financial consideration here, he's asking for swapping six remnant parcels totaling just less than four acres. And I'll go through these parcels one by one. This particular parcel is on Big Beaver, just west of Waterfall, which is just west of De Quinder. This parcel was a take for the road expansion. We did offer this parcel up for sale once, and there was no bidders. The four parcels on John R. were also part of a road expansion of John R. Road. The blue highlighted one, we recognize that we certainly don't want to preserve 10 acres of green space and trade it for any future mini-development, if you would. So one of our concerns was that we restrict these parcels for single-family home residential only, and Mr. Abatera agreed to that. So there's no future, even though that's a big parcel, and could, could visibly be combined with the parcel to the north at one day and make a small little subdivision, that deed will be restricted for single-family home residential only, so that could not occur on that parcel. And lastly, the parcel at Hickory and Plum was, was a tax.
Foreclosure.
Tax foreclosure, thank you, tax foreclosure, that actually went to the DNR and then actually went to the city of Troy back in the 70s. So we've had that parcel and maintained that parcel for quite some time. So I know there's always questions, next steps. So next steps, pending approval tonight, we would look at funding opportunities, because right now, we do not have any funding for the Trails and Pathways in the 2026 budget. We do in the 2027 budget, however, again, that is under the assumption that it's included in the bond and that the bond is successful. We had to make those assumptions when developing those future year budgets. So if the bond weren't have to pass and we are not able to get a TAP grant, then this project would compete with all of our other capital needs. We are currently working with AEW on a TAP grant submission. That funding probably wouldn't become available anyways till 2027, and that's usually an 80-20 match. So we're setting the groundwork. Our 10-year journey is going to be a little bit longer, but I think we're going to be in a great position, assuming approval tonight, to, to lay that trail and connect Segment One all the way up to Long Lake. Thank you.
Any questions? Councilmember Chanda?
First of all, thank you, yeah, nice proposal, excellent proposal. Just the paper road, the Hanover, how wide are those typically there?
Those paper streets, we did, they're, the width of the, usually 30 feet plus, plus. So we did, if I go back to here, the one, the between Latonia and Evelyn is a little bit narrower, because we did vacate some of that right of way years and years ago, but it's still wide enough for a pathway.
Yeah, because I was looking at the map, it didn't look like very wide, but I guess 30 feet is long enough.
Yes, those, it was originally intended to have a road. I mean, so that's why we call them paper streets, because it's plotted as a street. But however, the one right off of Latonia on the north side, it is a little narrower, it couldn't support a street, because we did vacate some of that right of way years ago. And, and the resident who actually requested that vacation built a house there for a family member, and, and at the time was in full support, knowing that one day, we actually may put a trail and pathway through there.
And all the six parcels that you're exchanging, they're all single-family homes?
That is correct, yes.
Great, thanks, yeah.
Councilmember Hamilton?
I have a question, just really liked this presentation, appreciated it, really summarized everything succinctly, and it brought back good memories of when we did the urban cuttings for the three phases, so thank you for that.
Go. Did you have a question, Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga?
I did. Kurt, the last plot of land that's on the corner, I can't remember where the streets was, that was the one that the DNR owned, and that has deed restrictions, right, that it cannot be developed? Is that correct?
No, that does not have any deed restrictions, to my knowledge. I think, yeah, Larissa ordered some title work on that, and, and there are no restrictions. I, I think that we, for whatever reason, I was always under the assumption that it was an undeveloped lot, but it is, it is developable.
Councilmember Hodrick?
Kurt, you touched on some of the research we did with residents and all the resident input we were getting. That was also during, wasn't there the community center? I guess for folks watching, this is a policy and kind of a citizen-driven effort that we're seeing come more and more to fruition. I guess, could you reflect on that input? And I remember it was like, there were three different options, and people could kind of indicate. I'm causing you to go back in the headhouse.
Yeah, no, no, I remember it. It was, it was a mini charrette, really. I mean, because we had tables set up where we invited residents to walk through the community center, 303 and 302, I believe. And we set up mini-stations so they could experience what is a share, you know, a shared lane on the road, what is a dedicated bike lane, what is ASHTO and those standards that we follow to develop these Trails and Pathways. And at the end, the residents were able to put sticky notes. But we've done so much engagement even since then. Even, we've, we've done storyboards where people actually can, you know, put their pins on the map and, you know, explain what they like about this portion of the trail and pathway. I think collectively, all of that is what we've heard, and the theme that we've tried to stick with over the years is Trails and Pathways in the city of Troy are really a recreational thing, and we should really emphasize the natural beauty of the city. And I think it was said, even when we ribbon-cut the Segment One, when you're walking back in the woods, you look around, you don't even realize you're in urban Troy. It's some of the beautiful areas that nobody, someone might not even be aware of until they go on the trail and pathway.
Councilmember Brooks.
Thank you, Kurt, for the presentation, this was really good. I just wanted to confirm that I understand correctly. Are you saying that in the event that the bond passes, we might be able to start this earlier? And if it doesn't, we might not be able to start the trail and pathway until 2026, 2027?
Sure, I can clarify that. So right now, we have, in the budget, in the 2027 budget, we have an assumption that we're going to use a portion of that bond, $3 million, so a portion of the bond for specifically trails and pathways. That would be likely funds available in 2027. So we could start 2027, assuming it's included in the bond and we're successful with that ask. We don't want to stop there, we want to do our, you know, fiscally responsible things and put in for grants, too. The TAP grant we're putting together for this project right now probably still won't be a 2027 let from the, which gets funneled through the feds to the state government. So I don't think either way, we are not looking at a construction until our fiscal year 27. We're certainly going to start design and planning for that, so it's ready to go when funds become available.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Mayor Protem Gun.
Thanks, Kurt, this looks like a long journey for you. So the four properties that we're trading, he can build a single-family home on all of them, right?
I'm sorry, there's a total of six, and yes, there's four on John R., one on Big Beaver, then one here, this is down by Robinwood Park. So yes, it's to my understanding that zoning and the size of the lot all could support a single-family residential. The only one that potentially could support more if it was combined was that northern one on John R., and that's the one that we actually have restricted through the deed, that it can only be used for a single-family residential.
Can you go to the panel with the 10 acres that we're getting?
Yes.
That one, yeah. So any additional use of that? I mean, I see the trail, but I mean, it's a lot of land.
It is, it's 10 acres. There is going to be some restrictions on the city side, it's going to have to be preserved for a park, and it has to, if we want to put any utilities through there, any gas lines, we'll have to get the grantor's permission. So in this case, Gary Abatera, and I think that sun sets at 30 years. So there is opportunity, there are some wetlands in here, which is one of the reasons why the trail actually snakes through there, that's to avoid the wetlands. But yeah, I don't, you know, with the school being right there, having a playground just at Leonard Elementary, just to the south, I'm not sure that it would, a playground would make sense there, but I think anything that would support that natural area, including the trail, maybe some benches and things like that.
Okay, thanks.
I'd like to move I-6, request to exchange city parcels for a privately-owned parcel for additional trail route as printed in the agenda packet. Support. Moved by the chair, supported by Mayor Protem Gun, that we approve I-6, request to exchange city parcels for a privately-owned parcel for an additional trail route as printed in the agenda packet. Discussion. Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga.
Thank you, Mayor, just two quick things. What I love about this is this new parcel we'd be getting, it's preserving green space, which is what our residents want. Secondly, it's recreational activity, and as you showed, we have reached out to residents, they've been clear that this is what they want to, what they'd like more of, trails and pathways. And I think, thirdly, I'm reminded, my first year on council asking, and that was when we were doing the first segment at Sylvan Glen Lake, or maybe it was starting with JC, how are these going to connect? And I remember you saying, that's, let's see, you know, that was the big million-dollar question. And now they're connecting. And I was starting to count out five different segments, but the last three really, they're not really, they're so interlinked, you no longer can really call them segments, and that's the beauty of it. It's now really interlinking, so I'm so proud to support this. I believe it's so responsive to what our residents want, so thank you.
Councilmember Tonda.
Yeah, add to that, I mean, it is really exciting proposal, and it's probably one of the best proposals I've seen in the last few months. I'm very happy to support, as you mentioned, I mean, it is, you know, when you're walking in this natural trails, you get lost. I mean, essentially you forget that you are in a city like Troy, especially maybe minutes from this bustling downtown or Big Beaver corridor. So no wonder it's a high priority for all our residents, I mean, it is something I'm happy to support. And also the parcels that you're exchanging, we really can't use them for any park or recreational purpose, they're too small or too isolated to be used for anything else. So I think it's a win-win situation, I actually want to thank you and Gary as well, and the school district also to cooperate. I think we, you know, it's thinking outside the box, it's exchanging what we need and what he needs. I mean, we also welcome six new families to Troy, I guess they will have six, you know, new homes, which is also good, but those of us who really care about the natural beauty of Troy, we can enjoy the natural beauties of Troy through the trails. In fact, I didn't know that idea, I actually drove there last week, had a vague idea looking at the map, and it really can get in also, so it would be nice to go through that, and I'm very happy to support.
Any discussion on this side? No, go ahead, Councilmember Hodrick.
I love that we're protecting green space particularly in this area because the residents there have taken a hit with development through that area and have probably been feeling panic about what could potentially happen there. So it's the right thing for the city overall, it's the right thing for that area, it's a no-brainer yes for me. Like, let the record reflect, I did this. It's been a really long time coming, so... And it does, it does serve the city overall. It's interesting that a developer who's been on the trails and pathways, has watched the inner workings, recognized how to create a win-win, and I'm glad, and I know it's you and others on staff that worked to bring what has been a very, very long-term vision, goes back to our previous mayor who was very committed to this because residents were so eager to see this. To be able to follow through is, it's a really good, it's a good night in Troy.
I wish we could have preserved the entire parcel, not just the green shaded area, but that was a hard sell to Mr. Abatera. So, but yeah, I think preserving 10 acres in this neighborhood, where you're right, has seen a lot of deforestation from development, I think is a good thing.
Yeah.
I feel I could talk for a long time about this, and I'm not going to. As one of the baby faces that didn't make the picture presentation, thank you, Kurt. I actually, I just want to pick up where Councilmember Hodrick just left off. It's no surprise, I don't often say a lot of, I don't say much about my predecessor in this role, but one thing he was very, very supportive of and adamant about was the trails and pathways in the city. And he often talked about one of his biggest heartbreaks of being a council member after the Great Recession was having to pull the funding that had been segregated for trails and pathways, just to keep the city afloat. And so I think that drove him to work hard in that regard. So I appreciate the previous mayor for his role in our trails and pathways, and the previous councils who also went right along with it. I was a resident, as you may recall, in that 2015 charrette, and had a different view than I may have today, sitting up here. But I'm glad to see this come forward. I appreciate all the work that goes in with Larissa and everybody in making sure all these parcels are properly managed and what may come to, may look to the public as something that's just coming to us in one kind of package. There was a lot of work and a lot of lead time that's gone into all this to ensure that everybody is getting the win-win that we're talking about. And I guess finally, I do want to thank you, Kurt. It's probably not appropriate, but you have been the champion from the city staff side who consistently is out walking in marshland, walking all over marking trail things, and it doesn't go unappreciated or unnoticed, so thank you. Looking forward to supporting this.
The vote, Ms. Stewart.
Councilmember Tonda.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Gun.
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Hodrick.
Yes.
Mayor Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks.
Yes.
Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga.
Yes.
Motion carries. Next up is I-7, 2025 city council meeting schedule, as introduced by City Manager Nastasi.
Thank you, Mayor, good evening, everyone. As you may recall, council approved quarterly evaluations for both the city manager and the city attorney positions. The first session was held on April 2nd of this year. And to stay consistent with that schedule, we're recommending two additional closed sessions, one July 14th and the other one October 6th, both at 6:00 PM, and both dates coincide with already scheduled council meetings. I know this isn't as exciting as the last agenda item, but I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Let the record reflect, I'm doing this.
More meetings.
Any questions to the city manager, Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga?
Just to confirm, James Vitrina will not be there for these?
No, he'd be facilitating on the front end, getting all the information, so it'd be the most productive meeting that we can have, but then he'll be sitting out, so, correct.
Absolutely, thank you.
I'd like to move the resolution. Councilmember Tonda.
I move I-7, 2025 city council meeting schedule as printed on the agenda packet.
Support. Moved by Councilmember Tonda, supported by Mayor Protem Gun, that we approve I-7, 2025 city council meeting schedule as printed in the agenda packet. Any discussion? Councilmember Hodrick.
Okay, it's not really as exciting, but from a process standpoint and oversight, policy-setting, administration standpoint, this is another tweak, or I don't know what the right word, another tool we've tried to put in our collective toolkit to improve our ability to manage through what is a tough thing to do, a council-manager form of government. It's, they say the best form, it can be cumbersome. Staying connected, staying on track, we have two employees that are accountable to us, being able to keep touching base in a constructive way and routine way is something that I think is really going to add value to the city going forward. And it's so obvious to me now that I'm not sure why it wasn't like that before, and I'm glad, you know, for folks that are falling asleep now at this point in the council chamber, as mundane as this is, it's like another one of those things where we're working to do governing better and better and more effectively, and this is one of those items.
Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to add to that, in the workforce, many of us know that the best practice has moved to ongoing conversations and having a chance in the middle of the year and throughout to revisit, what are those goals that you set for your own performance, and what's changed? And to be able to have a conversation about that with both the manager and those who are managing that person, like that's just how the workplace works today. And so very glad to have this process, as Councilmember Hodrick said, long time coming. And again, like it's wonderful, we have this opportunity to have these ongoing conversations and to do this.
All right, the vote, Ms. Stewart.
Mayor Protem Gun.
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Hodrick.
Yes.
Mayor Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks.
Yes.
Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga.
Yes.
Councilmember Tonda.
Yes.
Motion carries, that concludes regular business this evening. Next up is the consent agenda, would anyone like to pull an item from the consent agenda for further discussion? Councilmember Hamilton.
I'd like to move all items on the consent agenda as printed in the agenda packet.
Support.
Moved by Councilmember Hamilton, supported by Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga, that we approve all items on the consent agenda as printed in the agenda packet. Any discussion? The vote, Ms. Stewart.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Hodrick.
Yes.
Mayor Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks.
Yes.
Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga.
Yes.
Councilmember Tonda.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Gun.
Yes.
Motion carries, if you're here for an item on the consent agenda, all have been approved. Next up is member and future council agenda items. I do have one announcement of a public hearing this evening for K-1. On June 9th, 2025, the planned unit development, PUD 021 JPLN 2024-0012, proposed Somerset West Concept Development Plan and Preliminary Development Plan for Phase 1A, north side of Big Beaver, west side of Coolidge, 3100 West Big Beaver, and 88-20-19-430-004, Section 19, presently-zoned PUD Planned Unit Development Zoning District. Again, the plans are in there for June 9th, and we'll be here for a public hearing that evening. Mr. Stores, it's your turn. Public comment for items not on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses.
Am I on the clock? Okay, you found the envelope, good, thank you, thank you. Yeah. Mayor Baker, members of Troy City Council, I brought this, the issue of Sylvan Glen Number 3 flooding problem starting in December of 2023. And I want, there's a specific problem here I want to highlight, and apologize, but Mayor Baker has two pictures. And Mayor, the first picture, number one, is I'm standing in the drainway, the ditch, between Smith and Martell Schools, I'm facing the back of 5707 Martell Drive, and there's what I call a funnel, like a, we're looking into a four-foot sloped entrance thing. About halfway up, the slope starts, okay? And that two-by-four, there's a 16-foot two-by-four in that picture. I've highlighted the bottom section in a few places, so you know that's about it. That's right where the vertical part of the funnel goes to a slope, okay? About halfway up that opening. Well, and the bottom half of that bottom half, or about a foot of it, is all clogged with brush and debris, all right? Even if it wasn't plugged with brush and debris, the water doesn't have to get very high at all, and it can bypass a whole doggone entrance. So it's, you know, and to take full capacity of that funnel, you have to get water all the way to the top. Well, that, you'd have four foot of water in the backyard back there, maybe more, okay? And so, and what makes this doggone thing worse? I talked to Mary Ellen Hildebrand, the property owner there, and her husband was complaining to the city and the school district about that situation for 20 years, okay? Now, the second part of it, the second picture you've got, shows an opening where that funnel should be sealed to that pipe. That seal has failed below the halfway up on the pipe. So I really need this council to demand some initiative to get with the school district, to whoever, and solve this problem, because that is a non-functional entrance right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stores. I'm now realizing I'm the only one with the pictures, so we'll make sure we get copies to everybody, but it's been...
A couple other council people reached out to me, and so I sent them copies of the summary I sent to the residents after a meeting we had with the superintendent of schools.
Thank you. All right, next up is Imran Ahmad, says thank you. It's a very nice message, we'll take it. And we'll talk about Mr. Stores in one second, when we have an opportunity to reply.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Imran Ahmad. I've been a Troy resident since 2010, and Oakland County resident since 1978, when my father moved here when I was three years old. I know typically when a resident comes to speak, it's probably about a complaint or something that they need from the city, but that's not the case with me today. I'm here to thank the city and the various first responders and public servants who all tried to save my son's life the night he passed away, which was May 1st, just a few weeks ago. He passed away at Troy High School. So my son Bilal was a student at Bolon Park Middle School, and he was going to be a freshman at Troy High this fall. He was so excited to go there, but sadly, that was not meant to be. So on the night of freshman orientation, which was on May 1st, his mother and I and him, we went to the orientation. As soon as we walked in the door, they send the parents to the auditorium, and they send the kids, the incoming freshmen, to the gym. So at that moment, we said goodbye to our son, and that was the last time we saw him. As he was walking away, my wife turned to him and said, Bilal, Bilal, do you have your phone? And he turned around for a second, like annoyed, that why is she asking him this? And he said, yes, Mom, I have my phone, and then he ran off down the hall. Because he was so excited, he just wanted to go be with his friends and be with part of the orientation. So my wife and I sat down in the auditorium, and there's a big presentation going on. The principal of the school is on the stage, and his staff is there, and they have a nice PowerPoint. It's very motivational, and it had me pumped up, so excited about what it's going to be like for the freshman class coming in. And probably five or 10 minutes in, my wife's phone started ringing, and I'm shushing her, I'm like, don't answer your phone, there's a big presentation going on. going on on the stage right now. And of course, she answers her phone. And then she starts talking with her normal voice. And I'm like, shh, quiet. There's a...
I, I, I need to get consensus to give you another minute to continue.
Okay, sure. A minute, okay.
I mean, you can take two if you need it. I, I...
Okay, okay. Thank you. So, so basically, she answered her phone, and it was his friend, my son's friend in the gym, letting her know that Bilal had collapsed in the gym. So we rushed out of the auditorium. We went to the gym. As soon as we walked in, he was already on the floor with four Troy High School staff, teachers around him, giving him CPR. They had already called 911. Within a minute, the police was there. Within another minute, the EMS was there. All of them gave him CPR. They transferred him to the ambulance, took him to Troy Beaumont Hospital. My wife and I followed in our car. At the hospital, the same thing, they're giving him CPR. They, they're trying to get him back. He doesn't have a pulse. He's not breathing. They tried everything they could. And after hour, they said, we're sorry, your son has passed away. My son was born at Troy Beaumont Hospital in 2011, and he died at Troy Beaumont Hospital in 2025. It was a tragedy, but we're finding the good in it, and we're trying to turn it into something positive. My son always dreamed of going to Troy High School, and he was able to start his journey. He stepped foot in the school, and he was on that path. My wife and I were able to be with him in his last moments. That's a blessing. We were there with him. My wife and I were able to witness all the people that tried to save his life, starting with the teachers, the EMS, the police, the EMS, the hospital, everyone tried to save his life. I saw while they were giving him CPR, they had their lips on his lips, breathing into him. I saw in their eyes that they were trying to save the life of a child, and they were treating him as if he was their own child. That's what I feel in my heart. They didn't care the color of his skin, what religion he might be, his ethnicity, nothing. They're trying to save a child as if he's their own child. And the biggest blessing of all is because of this incident, we have started a charity in his name. We're collecting funds. The friends at his school, at his middle school, came up with this phrase called be like Bilal, which is beautiful. So my wife and I took it, and we started a website. We're collecting money for charity in Bilal's name. It's only been a week, and we've raised almost $35,000 in a week. So a lot of good has come out of this. The reason I'm here is just to say thank you to the city for being our home, and for all the people who tried to save my son's life that night, including the Troy High School staff, the police, the Troy Police, Troy EMS, Troy Beaumont Hospital, all of Troy. Thank you so much for everything you did. You tried your best, but it was not meant to be. But it's okay. My wife and I accept what happened. It was God's will. And we're trying to turn it into something positive, not only for us, but for the community. And I just wanted to come here and say thank you to the city of Troy for being with us and supporting us. Thank you.
That concludes those who have signed up for public comment for items not on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. It's an opportunity to respond and reply. I, I do want to say, May 30, there is a celebration of life for Bilal, and I will be there certainly. But I appreciate you coming forward this evening and doing something that I'm not sure I could have done in your position. So, thank you. I, I, I will give every, I, city management have a copy of these pictures, Mr. Storres? I know you've, Mr. Store, you've met with...
I can send them one.
We'll make sure that you have these. And I, again, I think council would agree that...
You're going to give yours, so I don't have to worry about it?
I'll take care of it, yes. Certainly, they haven't seen the pictures yet, but if we could address that and see what's necessary.
City clerk actually would be the, the person who...
That's what I meant. Sorry. Additional response in nearby. Councilmember Brooks?
I, I just wanted to say something to Mr. Ahmad. It's really hard. I'm trying to hold myself together. So I'm, I'm so sorry for your loss. My daughter would have been in the same class as him. She went to Hamilton with your son. And I know a lot of people in that class, and a lot of people that went to Bow, and she ended up at Smith. And she was actually supposed to be there that night, but she, we have an older daughter, so she decided she didn't need the, need the information. But I've heard a lot about it, and I'm, I'm so sorry for, for your loss. And, and it has really touched me, and I'm, I'm sure all of us. But I know, I just feel very, a little bit closer to it, probably just because I know so many people from the same class and everything. So I'm really sorry to hear.
Thank you. We're with you. All of us. I can see it in the audience members as well. Thank you for coming. We don't have any council referrals this evening. We do have some reports. Does anybody have any comments on the reports? All right. Council comment? Mayor Protem Gun?
Well, first, I'd like to extend my condolences. And I don't know, I couldn't have done that either. I wanted to express my thanks to Mayor Baker and the city staff for the amazing State of the City presentation we had. That was a wonderful job. I was very touched by the comments I, when Council Hoderick spoke about and her, for her husband. However, I will say, on the ride home, my wife was like, you know, I was at our first city council in a cask, and you said nothing about me. I had to hear it.
Sorry.
All the way home. So, pretty new council members, I would say, if you have a new bar, that's, don't forget to mention your spouse, right? But, I think so.
Additional council comments?
I did want to, sorry.
You need a minute?
No, I know, I'm okay. I can, I can. So I, I just wanted to also mention the Run for Nature that will take place on, on June 8. You can sign up. Obviously, the Nature Center's having their fundraisers. So everyone, we appreciate anyone signing up and, and running. And they have the Little Sprout Sprint, and the 5K Run, and the 2K Walk as well. So we appreciate everyone supporting the Nature Center.
All right. We don't have anybody signed up for public comment for items on or not on the agenda for members of the public outside of Troy. We do have a closed session, so we will recess from here and pick back up in the council boardroom for the closed session in five minutes. Five minutes, where I expect we'll adjourn in there.